Council, please rise for the playing of the National Anthem and a moment of reflection.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all of us common. Car ton bras se portait les pays, il se portait la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillants exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Evening, council. I'd like to Councilor McPherson to read the land acknowledgement, please.
The land on which council meets today is the traditional territory of the Haudenosaunee and Anishnaq peoples, many of whom continue to live and work here today. This territory is covered by the Upper Canada Treaties and is within the land protected by the Dish with One Spoon Wampum Agreement. Today, this gathering place is home to many Indigenous peoples made up of First Nations, Inuit, and Métis. The Dish with One Spoon Wampum Agreement should remind us of our responsibility to ensure the dish, the land on which we live and work, is never emptied, and that we take care of the land and its inhabitants in a way that ensures its future sustainability.
Thank you, councillor. Now for the mayor's report. Mayor Siscoe is not with us tonight, and as our CAO, he's not with us either. Their children are graduating tonight, and wish them very well. We wish all students in St. Catharines the very best as they proceed through the wonderland of education, and also to thank all the teachers for all the work that they do in making sure that our children are the best they can be. Mayor's report. The Soil Arts Festival launch. Congratulations to Tamara Jensen and her team at Suitcase &amp; Point for hosting the 16th Annual in the Soil Festival earlier this month. The festival brings Niagara and visiting artists together from a range of disciplines to provide unique audience experiences. The festival nurtures a creation of new work, encourages innovation, and offers intimate and uncommon platform for artists to take risks, share thought-provoking experiences, stories, workshops, installations, and more. We look forward to the return of the festival next year. The opening of the navigation season in Port De Lucey at the De Lausie Yacht Club Sail Pass. Earlier this month, the mayor was honored to participate in the De Lausie Yacht Club's annual Sail Pass event, to cherish the tradition which celebrates our rich maritime heritage and the opening of the navigation season for our yachters. Thank you to the De Lausie Yacht Club for consistently demonstrating a dedication to organizing engaging events and activities that bring members together, creating a strong bond among individuals with shared interests. Here's to smooth sailing and fair winds. National Indigenous Peoples' Day. This past Friday, we celebrated National Indigenous Peoples' Day by raising the two-row Wampum flag at City Hall. The city takes great pride in fostering meaningful relationships with our Indigenous communities. Our commitment to truth and reconciliation is at the core of our initiatives, and we are proud of our memorandum of understanding with the NRNC. The Holy Festival this past weekend, the Downtown Association hosted their annual Holy Festival of Color. Holy is an ancient Hindu celebration that marks the arrival of spring and symbolizes new beginnings. Thank you to the DTA and the many community partners that made this event possible and gave our community the opportunity to come together, celebrate diversity, and bask in the joyous ambiance that encapsulates this vibrant event. Kamikos Pearl. Congratulations to Bravo Niagara, the first performing arts center on the world premiere of Kamikos Pearl this past weekend. This original ballet based on the Japanese-Canadian internment of World War II marks the first time this tragic wartime experience has been told through ballet. Special congratulations to Bravo Niagara, co-founders Christine Maury and her daughter Alexis Spieldener, who created and produced Kamikos Pearl. St. Patrick's Park Grand Reopening. Today, the mayor, ward councillors McPherson and Ratzlaaf, along with staff, celebrated the grand reopening of the multi-use courts at St. Patrick's Park as part of the city's parks renewal plan. The plan, which started in September 23, is part of our mission to keep our parks and playgrounds accessible and enjoyable for everyone. Special thanks to the amazing team at Touchdown Site Contractors and our dedicated city staff at EFES and CRCS to make this happen. Grand openings, we have four. Daniel &amp; Partners, after 100 years downtown, the law offices of Daniels &amp; Partners LLP have moved to a beautiful new location at 300B Fourth Avenue. Congratulations on your new space, and thank you for continuing to do business here in St. Catharines. The Dart Wellness Center. Congratulations to George Dart Funeral Home on the grand opening of the Dart Wellness Center program last week. This wonderful initiative is set to provide much-needed support to families and children who are grieving. The center offers a compassionate space young people can process their emotions and receive guidance on their journey through grief and loss. The Dart Wellness Center is a testament to the commitment of George Dart Funeral Home to support and uplift families during their most challenging times. Niagara Nautico. This afternoon, the mayor, myself, and councillor Stevens had the opportunity to celebrate the grand opening of Niagara Nautico, a place where professional service meets curated hospitality, and where Captain Russ's boat, Black Diamond, provides a unique waterfront experience for those who want to celebrate their wedding day on the water or simply go for a sail on Lake Ontario. Congrats to Reverend Captain Russ as he embarks on this exciting journey of entrepreneurship. Upcoming community events. Lakeside Long Weekend programming is coming up this weekend, and you don't want to miss out. Join us on July 30 and July 1 at Lakeside Park for live music, family games, arts and crafts, and Creative Club Global Lego and Giant Block Lounge. Of course, a carousel will also be running both days, and there will also be food trucks and much more. For a full schedule of events, check out the city's social media platforms. See you there. Celebrate Canada Day in a very, very great way in Port De Lucey. As usual, I'm sure our councillors will be there to greet you. Do I have anything from council that they'd like to announce? Councillor Stevens. I don't have councillors. Oh, okay. Still not coming on. There's a method to our madness.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just to elaborate on what we're calling the Lakeside Long Weekend, I'm glad you mentioned it's Canada Day. I think that that should be what we're calling it again, Canada Day. It's always been Canada Day. And staff can correct me if I'm wrong. There is going to be free parking in the Lakeside Park parking lot from noon to 6:00 on the Sunday, June 30, and noon to 10:30 PM on Monday, July 1. Does that sound right? Thank you. I just wanted to make the public aware of that. And then the fireworks are going to be on, as they traditionally are on Monday night, at, I guess sometime just after 10:30 or so. So just wanted to add a little bit to what you said. Thank you.
A hot time in good old Port De Lucey again. Councillor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Two quick things. First of all, I was...
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no worries, whatever, however.
I was with the mayor for the De Lucey Yacht Club Sail Pass, and it was a great event. And we managed to help vote for the best dressed boat, so that was a thrill. But yesterday, I had the pleasure of representing the mayor and council at the Third Annual Niagara Jazz Festival Picnic, Jazz Picnic, they call it, that was held at the beautiful grounds of the Brown Homestead, which, as most of you know, is St. Catharines' oldest house or home, and which has been totally restored if anybody gets a chance to see it. We had great music, and the Jazz Festival is now in its 11th year, and it does great work for our community, both in expanding the art form of jazz, music that everybody can enjoy, plus they have other types of music as well. So if you have an opportunity, I encourage everybody to attend when they can. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Lindell.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We'd like to welcome Lowe's Mirror Windows and Glass to Maritton. They opened a new shop up on Hartzell Road. They look fantastic there. They certainly brighten up the street. If you go and drop by, they have a long history in St. Catharines, so it's really nice that they've come into Maritton. If you want to drop by, they're right beside Bra's Grill on Hartzell Road.
Thank you. And councillor Stevens.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just like to add, on Thursday, out at the airport, Provincial Transport Minister Shakaria came out to tour the airport, and we showed him some of our plans for future growth of the airport. The mayor's Jim Di Addati and our own mayor, Matt Siscoe, were in attendance as well, and it was good to get the transport ministers down here to show what kind of a gem we have as the airport and to move ahead with that. So it was a very good meeting there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Anyone else wish to add anything for their past two weeks? No? At this point, I'll turn the mic over to Director Smith. He'd like to introduce one of our newest employees.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and through you to council. I would like to introduce Chris Anders, who joined Team STC as our manager of linear infrastructure operations. Chris is a professional engineer that has come to us from the private side but has previous municipal experience in both the city of Niagara Falls and the city of Welland, and just wanted to have a chance to introduce him to council as he takes on this very important role in managing our linear infrastructure. Thank you.
Explain exactly what Chris's responsibilities are going to be so that when we need to phone him, we make sure we're phoning the right person rather than you, Director Smith.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So he will be responsible for road, sewer, and water main operations. So he'll be responsible for delivering snow clearing in the winter, maintaining the roadways in the summer, doing the operational planning of maintenance and executing maintenance on our linear infrastructure, being sewers and water main.
Thank you. Snow clearing? Hopefully, you will become our best friend. Clerk?
The following amendments have been made to the agenda. Motions will be discussed after item four, declarations of interest in the following order, 10.3, and 10.1, and then 10.2. And the following items of additional correspondence have been placed in council's Sugar Sync folder. Confidential memorandum from the Director of Corporate Services and the Director of Fire Services regarding fire labor relations update, Local 485.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? Councillor Lindell, seconded by councillor Stevens. Thank you. All in favor? Carried. Adoption of minutes. The council adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting held on June 10, 2024. Can I have a motion to adopt the minutes? Councillor McPherson, thank you. Seconded by councillor Williamson, thank you. All in favor? No one's opposed? Good. And that's carried. Declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest at this time? Seeing none. Declaration to all presenters. I have to read this because we do have a presentation tonight. Council chambers and all municipalities in our country represent the seat of local democracy. Many acts that govern us understand the necessity of collective voice when decisions are being made to grow our spaces, pass our bylaws, and to seek opinions on very complex issues and sharing safe spaces for all in a public discourse. We recognize the right of the majority to decide, the minority to be heard, the public to have an opportunity to participate, and all participants to be treated with courtesy and respect. It's imperative that elected officials, citizens, and staff have input, and it is paramount that we listen to one another and question one another, but that we understand we do this in a way that never undermines any person's ability or dignity in our chambers. We respect the right for everyone to have an opinion and remind the audience views of the public do not always reflect those of the corporation of the city of St. Catharines. With the motions in regards to the Green Roads Pilot Project, prior to discussion, we will hear from Paul Vada, Senior Vice President, Legal Counsel for Bio Diffusion Technologies, and Tyler Whale, founder of Bio Diffusion Technologies and Acting VP, Business Development. He will be available by Zoom for questions that may arise. So I'll turn it over to Paul at this point, I hope.
And good evening, everyone. Actually, it's Tyler who's going to be doing most of the speaking. Paul and I have decided it's easier to have one than several. So through you, Deputy Mayor, first, I'd like to say thank you very much for the opportunity to speak in support of the motion that's being put to council tonight. It is a nice coincidence that Chris is here in his new position to witness this motion, actually, as linear infrastructure. First, my name is Tyler Whale, by the way, and to the best of my knowledge, you are the first council in Ontario to propose such a motion, and I think that this is a critical step to acknowledging the role and impact that governments play in facilitating or accelerating investments into new technologies or new techniques of doing things that will ultimately be more efficient for tax use and simultaneously in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So hats off to this council. In this presentation, I have to skip many of the details. You will have a copy accessible to you, and I'm happy to answer questions at any time, but to keep within the five-minute limit. Many details will be skipped. And can I get the slides moved ahead and go to the next one, please? So first off, who is Bio Diffusion Technologies? We're an Ontario-based company that produces a bioresin that has many applications, including one that we call Green Roads. Just for clarity, resins have many applications, such as binding and sealing materials, and the bio prefix should mean that it has no fossil carbon in it and therefore offers an important opportunity for carbon capture. I invite you all to imagine a day that our road infrastructure is actually an infrastructure that captures carbon rather than the massive emissions that are responsible for today. And if we can advance the slides again. Next, I think everybody knows from this slide that roads are expensive, they are in a state of disrepair generally, and we are constantly trying to keep up with both the budget and the maintenance of our road infrastructure. Next slide, please. And will I stop on this one, actually? No, I don't think I will. We'll go to the next slide. This one's a good one. So, look, the very use of our bioresin does result in carbon capture, but it also has additional benefits when used in different ways. For example, if we look at the top left, stabilizing a road base or adding strength to the base will give the surface layer more resilience and longevity. The second one below that, incorporating rap into either stronger bases or high-rap asphalt, and just for clarity, rap is recycled asphalt. Incorporating rap into high-rap asphalt enables better recycling of your existing asphalt assets, and one day soon, we might see 100% recycling of road materials, and that's the top right, called cold-in-place recycling. Fixing potholes, bottom left, with greener, more effective, and cheaper materials is a triple win for municipalities, and there are many applications for bioresins in road infra... are many applications for bio resins in road infrastructure that are commercial-ready today and should be applied today where they best fit. I'm very happy to discuss these in greater detail with any who are interested. Next slide, please. Look, this is a slide that I think you should all read. It talks about the environmental impact of of BDT, but for the sake of tonight, I'm going to go to the economic impact. So the next slide, next, and this one. So while there are huge environmental benefits to be achieved, there's also economic benefits to understand. We have tested these applications and outcomes on all and all road experts, I should say, will support that a stronger base will provide a longer-lasting road or wearing course. This lowers the overall life cycle costs of your road. Alternatively, a stronger base can allow for a thinner asphalt layer or use or or use different surfacing techniques that can be more affordable, like chip seal, for example. Finally, hired recycle content in asphalt means that cheaper inputs, inputs that you have already purchased in paving your road network previously, can be used for. Some of these savings should be passed on to the taxpayer. This slide really represents an analysis of what was done in Centre Wellington, a municipality just south, sorry, just north of Guelph, where I live. Basically, the assessment of the impact of the strength increase in their road base suggests that the asphalt on top will exist for a further five years, a life extension of about five years, and that results in a life cycle cost savings of about $25,000 per two lane kilometer. So at this stage, I've tried to keep the presentation short. There is a lot of material that I skipped over. I certainly welcome questions, and I'd like to thank councillors Williamson and Ratzla for bringing this motion to the floor and to your whole council for having this consideration in front of you. Thank you very much for the time. I welcome any questions.
And thank you for staying within the five-minute presentation. Questions from council. Councillor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Very interesting. I'm just curious, when you say plant-based, I don't know if that was in the detailed presentation, but is there a specific plant that provides most of the source for this? Or is it various or?
Yeah, excellent question, and it is an interesting one. The reality is that this is a complex blend of resins and chemistries, terpenes, organic acids, that kind of thing from a variety of different plants. Some come from forestry, some come from agriculture, but it tends to be the remnants from practices or or waste from these industries, councillor.
Thank you for that.
Councillor Kushner.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The question I have is, you mentioned one municipality where this has been used. What about other examples?
Yep. The our company was founded in 2022. We built our first facility in late '22 and started testing within different private and public sector areas, Centre Wellington being one of them. So they did a test in 2023 that was about 300 meters long. This was a base stabilization test. That was preceded by a lot of different work with Dufferin Construction and other partners in private testing of this resin in mining pits, gravel pits and and private sector, sorry, private land as well. We have also done some testing in Puss Lynch Township. We have a number of conversations with different municipalities around Ontario who are ready to use this resin in 2024 and considering expansion in 2025, assuming that the projects go well. So while it has been used in many municipalities, we highlight Centre Wellington simply because, one, they are were the first and the earliest, and, two, they have done a commercial length road or will be doing a commercial length road, I should say, later this summer. Testing in the United States has also been done. And frankly, this resin has been around for quite some time. It's just now becoming a commercial viability or commercially viable, I should say.
And a follow-up question. Has the material been tested by the province?
Yeah, great question. Actually, the MTO has their eyes on it. The Ministry of Transportation of Ontario has their eyes on this resin through different organizations. One is called ORBA, the Ontario Road Building Authority, that runs a council called the OAPC, Ontario Asphalt Paving Council. We're in a trial this summer with the OAPC to test our resin against other international competitors in the space, some of them brought to you by very big companies like Cargill. So, yes, the province, the the federal government, as well as international governments, do have their eyes on what is going on with this. But ultimately, it it comes down to to clients demanding pull of a of a technology like this into the system. So you being the municipality that owns roads, your your key factor is that you offer this as a as a customer desire for the asphalt paving companies to bring to you. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. It does.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
One question I have is, as far as the covering working in the wintertime, have you tested it as far as how it works in the in the wintertime? Is it as good as as what it is or what we have now as far as grip is concerned or anything like that maintained?
Again, excellent questions, Deputy Mayor. Yes, we have tested this in the winter. In fact, that's why the the plant was built in '22, and we're not really commercial viable until '24. We had to at least see one field test or several field tests, but going through a freeze thaw of the winter. In northern climates, of course, that's critical, and that's where a lot of the road destruction happens. Several things are going on here. We are not an asphalt company. We're really, we're an ingredient company for asphalt and/or for road construction, use in different ways. Like I said, base stabilization, pothole repair, et cetera. Companies like Dufferin who are testing this resin and independent private labs do the freeze thaw tests. They're called DCT tests and other technical things that that show that this resin is as the the performance is as good as the regular hot asphalt. That's important. If if it's not going to perform as well as the alternative, then there's no sense in using it, and those tests are being done and passed.
I guess my question is, is it going to be better?
Well, it's going to be better in a few different ways. So price, performance, and process is critical. Green is important. So I like to say we achieve the first three and wrap a green bow around it. Again, that's particular to our our company. So the price, we don't set the prices of asphalt. The asphalt producers do. We do the analysis for what the impacts of the resin are on your overall life cycle of the road. These things are, again, this is detail that that any expert can look at. We're actually working with one of the most notorious road experts in Canada. His name is David Hine, and Dave has just been been all over the the testing and the experimental design. It may very well work better one day, but ultimately, I think what you're getting to is, yes, we are coming up with better solutions all the time. And anytime we can use new sunshine instead of old, it's probably better for the planet.
Thank you, Tyler. Thank you for your presentation. I see no other questions from councillors. And so we'll proceed with the vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I get a councillor to move to move the motion to receive the delegation, please? Councillor Lindell, seconded by councillor Garcia. Thank you. I think it's going to be in the in the the motion itself. When we get to the motion, it's being referred to staff. We're just, I'm just asking to receive the delegation right now. Receiving the delegation motion, the council received the delegations from Paul Vada and Tyler Whale regarding the Green Roads Project. All in favor of that? Okay. Moving the motion, I have councillor Williamson and can I have someone to second the motion because councillor Townsend is not here. Councillor Ratzla, thank you. If you want to read the motion, go ahead, councillor, or if you just want to speak to it, go ahead. Councillor Williamson?
And get right to the resolution part, if you like. Go ahead. Okay. Therefore, be it resolved that St. Catherine City Council directs staff to investigate the feasibility and potential benefits of using bio resin on city roadworks, and be it further resolved that staff investigate other alternative construction materials and methods for roadworks that minimize the city's carbon footprint and are more environmentally sustainable. Be it further resolved that staff prepare a report on the findings no later than Q3 2024, including potential costs, benefits, and environmental impacts of using bio resin or other sustainable construction materials or methods for roadworks in a feasible list of city streets where a pilot project may be considered in accordance with the city's procurement policy. And be it further resolved that this resolution be distributed as indicated in the motion. And I'll just speak to this quickly. It's important that we are open to seeking greener ways of doing business to make us a more sustainable community. And I would like to tip my hat to councillor Townsend, who's done most of the legwork behind bringing this forward. And I'm not sure if he's on the call, but he he may have a word on this as well. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. No, councillor Townsend is preoccupied this evening. Any questions or concerns from council? Seeing none. Turn it over to the clerk for a vote, a recorded vote.
Councillor Williamson? Councillor Ratzla? Councillor Ratzla?
Yes.
Councillor Stevens?
Yes.
Councillor Dodge?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Lindell?
Yes.
Councillor Kushner?
Yes.
Councillor McPherson?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Phillips?
Yes.
And that's carried.
Moving to 10.1, approval of the asset management plan for the St. Catherine's Public Library. I have councillor Lindell moving the motion. Could I have a second, please? Councillor McPherson, thank you. Councillor Lindell?
Thank you. This motion and I think councillor Stevens' motion are very similar, but it's basically whereas the St. Catherine's Public Library Board engaged with GM Blue Plan to complete the St. Catherine's Public Library Asset Management Plan, which was approved at its June 13, 2024 board meeting, and whereas in accordance with Ontario Regulation 58817, every asset management plan must be approved by a resolution passed by our council. Therefore, be it resolved that council endorsed the asset management plan prepared by GM Blue Plan for the St. Catherine's Public Library.
Thank you, councillor. Questions from council? To the clerk for a vote, please.
Councillor Lindell?
Yes.
Councillor McPherson?
Yes.
Councillor Ratzla?
Yes.
Councillor Dodge?
Yes.
Councillor Williamson?
Yes.
Councillor Stevens?
Yes.
Councillor Kushner?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Phillips?
Yes.
And that's carried.
10.2, approval of asset management plan for the Niagara District Airport. Moving the motion, I have councillor Stevens. Seconding the motion, I have councillor Lindell. Thank you. Councillor Stevens. Therefore, be it resolved would be a good place, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Or you can speak to it if you'd like before that.
Well, I I have a I have a text from Dan Pealan, the the airport. I can't remember what his title is right now. I'm sorry. Help me out here? Yeah, the man, yeah, manager. If there was any questions about it, he has something to add. I don't know if it's necessary. He just said, reality is, there's a gap in the asset management program due to the assets that have been recently replaced with federal grants or the runway which we're unsure which will need to be reopened, and a hangar that may not have future uses, so they may not likely be replaced. So future capital needs are not annualized at a million a year and will be attached to larger projects such as a main runway rather than being annualized by taking the total number and dividing it by the total years.
So I'm assuming all that will be part of their asset management?
Yeah, so but that was added to it.
Yes.
He just texted me that. He was in his car. He was going to try to be on Zoom if needed, but.
That's fine. So would you just read the therefore be resolved, please?
Therefore, be resolved that council endorse the asset management plan prepared by SLBC Inc. dated May 6, 2024, for the Niagara District Airport Commission.
Thank you. Any questions from council? To the clerk?
Councillor Stevens?
Yes.
Councillor Lindell?
Yes.
Councillor Kushner?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Ratzla?
Yes.
Councillor Dodge?
Yes.
Councillor McPherson?
Yes.
Councillor Williamson?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Phillips?
Yes.
That's carried.
As far as consent reports are concerned, council approved the consent agenda, save and accept for those items brought forward for discussion. At this point, no items have been brought forward or requested to be moved from consent to discussion. Is there anyone that wants to bring anything at this time? Nope. Moving the motion to approve the consent agenda, I have councillor Kushner. Thank you. To the clerk to read the list of consent reports and call the recorded vote at this time.
Today's consent agenda, item 6.1, Community Recreation and Culture Services, Recreation and Culture Programs 2024, St. Catherine's Cultural Investment Program Funding. Item 6.2, Engineering Facilities and Environmental Services, Single Source Procurement of Consulting Services for a Proposed Level of Service Asset Management Plan. Item 6.3, Engineering Facilities and Environmental Services and Financial Management Services, 2024 Strategic Asset Management Policy Update. Item 6.4, Planning and Building Services, Planning Services, Notice of Intention to Designate the Property at 190 Church Street, the Benai Israel Synagogue under Part IV of the Ontario Heritage Act. And 6.5, Legal and Clerk Services, Office of the City Clerk, Council Correspondence.
To vote?
Councillor Kushner?
Yes.
Councillor Dodge?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor McPherson?
Yes.
Councillor Ratzla?
Yes.
Councillor Lindell?
Yes.
Councillor Stevens?
Yes.
Councillor Williamson?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Phillips?
Yes.
And that's carried.
As we move forward, public meetings, there are none, presentations, there are none, and discussion reports, there are none. Notices of motion, are there any notices of motion coming from council for the next meeting at this time? None? Do we have any report requests for the next meeting? Seeing none. Committee and task force minutes to receive. Can I have a mover to receive and file the minutes, councillor Stevens? Thank you. And seconded by councillor Williamson. Thank you. And the motion is that council receive and file the minutes of the advisory committees of council as presented. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Carried. Now we move to the closed session. I'll look to the clerk to read the reason for going into closed session.
A motion to go into closed session for Financial Management Services, Property Matter Disposal, Close Pursuit into Municipal Act, Section 239-2C, a proposed or pending disposition of land by the municipality of a local board, 295 Glendale Avenue. And Legal and Clerk Services, Legal Services, Sonic Status Update, Close Pursuit into Municipal Act, Section 239-2E, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board. And F, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose.
Thank you, clerk. Can I have a councillor move the motion to go into closed session for the reason noted by the clerk? Councillor Kushner, seconded by councillor Lindell. Thank you. Motion that council move into the closed session for the reason noted by the clerk at this time. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Proceed in camera. Additional bylaw, additional bylaw A be read a first time, considered and passed, but bylaw do authorize a conveyance of certain lands to Thorold Music Limited, one reading with respect to lands municipally known as 295 Glendale Avenue to be considered by council. Can I have a counselor to move that motion, please? Counselor Garcia, seconded by Counselor McPherson, thank you. All in favor. And that there be no further items of business that this meeting be adjourned. Counselor Lindell, would you move that, please?
Yes.
Seconded by Counselor Stevens. Have a nice evening, everyone.